Okay, it is nine o'clock. We're, this is the regular stated meeting of the Hood County Commissioners Court. We're meeting in the central jury room at the Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl. Would y'all please rise for the invocation and the pledges?
Oh, Lord, our God in heaven, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this place. Thank you for this time that you have given us. We ask, Lord, that you would be with the Commissioners Court this morning, that they may make good decisions and choose wisely how they direct the affairs of this county. We thank you, Father, for the sunshine you've sent our way today. We ask that you would be with those who are on the road and keep them safe. We pray, Father, that you would be with all of those who serve in our military, that they would have comfort and safety and success in their mission and that you would bring them home safely to us. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Y'all join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the pledge to Texas?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, this morning, do we have any special presentations, Bob? None? Okay, does any citizen that wish to make any comments about any agenda item, if they do, the sheriff has a form. Have one sheriff, okay. Anyone else? Okay, the consent agenda, I have been asked to take off item eight is because it is not quite ready yet for publication. So, does anybody else wish to pull anything else off? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item H. Motion made by Commissioner Rohn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Secuted by Commissioner Tout. So, is there any further discussion on approving the consent agenda? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. What I would, no, wait just one second. I'd like to move item C on the miscellaneous next because Tim needs to get out and start scraping ice and...
Item one.
Item one, rather, yeah. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a request for five additional parking signs for staff parking on the south side of the library.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. Courtney couldn't make it this morning. She asked me to stand in for her. She has talked to the city and they have come to an agreement as to which parking spots on the south side of the building are on county property and which ones are on city property. And there are five available. They're asking for reserved spots for employees because back don't have anywhere to park. So, they've asked that y'all approve that they put some reserved parking signs up.
Courtney had letter said he's okay with it.
Yes, sir.
Good to go. I'd like to make a motion to...
Approve this.
Approve this deal, putting five additional parking signs for staff for the library.
This is on the south side of the library where public parking is on the north side of the library.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Dever and seconded by Commissioner Rohn to add five additional parking spaces with signs on the south side of the library. Is any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you.
Now, go back into item number eight, which is road divisions and plats.
Morning, Judge Cochrane, Commissioners. First one we have is under road operations, discuss and take appropriate action with accepting the following dedicated roads in Oak Trails Shore subdivision or make passable for GISD bus traffic, EMS, law, and fire. There's a list of roads there that...
Don put this on the agenda for me. I have letters that I put in your backup in June where Terry Slimmons, the bus superintendent for GISD, had written letters about some of the roads. When Oak Trails Shores was platted in 1969, those roads were on the deed as deeded to us, but not all of them were accepted. If you look at the maps that are also on your backup, you'll see that some of the roads were accepted and some were not accepted. Over the years, you've had roads that have been upgraded and accepted to the county and others that are still not. These roads were identified by the Oak Trails Shores Board of Directors along with GISD as some of the roads that they could use for student pickup. It equals about 1.34 miles, I believe, if we accept those roads in. Obviously, we're in the winter time of the budget, in the winter time for road ops, so they'd have all six months to get ready and be prepared on what they put on their schedule for what road they take in. I went and drove all five of these roads. The roads that's in the worst shape is Oak Meadow. It's 980 feet. It needs to be potholed, but I believe that if we're gonna have fire and EMS, school buses, and the mail out there in that neighborhood, we need to make these roads passable and do what we can. I believe Terry McDonald from the president of Oak Trails Shores is in the audience if he wants to address this judge.
Would you like to speak to the Commissioners Court this morning? Or... Okay.
My name is Terrence McDonald. I'm the president of the homeowners association out there. Been an owner out there since '06, permanent resident since 2010. I've been on the board since I moved out there. I went to the board meetings the entire time I've been an owner. We have made tremendous progress out there as far as improving our community, and this is one of the projects that we've been working on for about two years now. And with the help of Commissioner Barry, we've finally come to a point where we've identified some problems that we can be helped with. Of course, we have a few more roads that do need attention, but I understand that there's only so much you can do each year. But the community as a whole has made a tremendous, a lot of headway in the last three years, and this is just another step to make us a community that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your comments. I will entertain a motion to...
I'd like to make a comment here.
Yes, sir.
This Oak Meadows is pretty much one that's gonna need a lot of work on, Don.
Yeah.
Are the other roads in pretty good shape or just potholing, tree trimming?
The only thing that'll have to be done, I believe, right now, Commissioner Dever, if we accept them is for school bus traffic, they'll have to be the county standards of 14 feet. So, there'll be some on Shadowwood, there'll have to be, you know, the, no, the not widen, the clearance for the tops of the buses.
Oh, okay.
That'll have to be done now versus spring or summer.
Does the road right now meet county specs for us to take over?
No, sir.
Okay. Are you guys willing to bring that up to county specs before we start maintaining them?
They already have presence on that. They've already been dedicated, they just were never accepted.
Have the, has the homeowners association done anything on these roads we're discussing here?
Yes, we have. We have continued to pothole the roads. Our problem is, is we have a $50 a year dues and we have about a 20% of ownership that we can't even find the owners, so we don't have a lot of money to work with. We made tremendous strides this year on a lot of roads, roads that have not been addressed that were in worse shape than some of these, especially in Precinct One and Oak Hill especially. It gets some, makes some good headway with that. We continue to do what we can, but we can only afford a part-time man in the summertime to help with the roads, and that's pretty much a two-man full-time job, so we only have one man's man we use year-round, and then we have to hire someone in the summer. So, we're doing what we can for about one...
Don, what would you say, what percentage of roads do we currently have out there? I mean, do we have 20, 50, what do we have?
70%.
70%?
I'd say, yeah.
One other question, Don, and I know I'm putting you on the spot. How much of a burden will this put on your road ops department as far as maintenance and doing all this if we accept these roads?
Commissioner Dever, it'd be like any other, it would, I mean, it would affect it somewhat on any kind of a acceptance. In past, it depends on what we accepted. In past, we've received money. Wind Hollow was a good example.
Yeah.
In this case, we'll have to spend money to get it to a point where we can seal coat.
Drainage and all that's in pretty good shape, or we're gonna have to go in there and redo all the drainage and...
A lot of places, we're not gonna be able to because they've already got their driveways set. I mean, it would be a long process of having to really correct the drainage about redoing their driveways.
So, can we accept these roads like in the past, I know they've done it in the past, and not be responsible for the drainage? I know Commissioners in the past have done that.
Yes, yes, they have.
Yeah, that's what I was getting to, too.
Because we're gonna get clobbered these roads, and they got culverts and all that set in it, and they're gonna come back and say, "Well, I'm flooding out, y'all fix the drainage on it." Can we accept these without?
It's been done in the past.
I know it has.
Yes, it would be a...
I think the county has a long-term investment responsibility here, too, to help an area that's trying to help itself as far as cleaning up. I have one similar to it, as you know, and progress that's made, I mean, they're small pieces, but they are progress, and I think they're working hard to do that out there. So, I would be in favor of approving the acceptance if we can at least initially not be responsible for what's gonna happen with drainage.
See, that's why it says, "Make passable for GISD bus traffic, EMS, fire, and law."
So, you're saying that does not include the drainage issues?
You take it, you take it on the boundaries it's already taken like we've done for the last seven years.
Yeah.
This was platted in '69, is that correct, Don?
Yeah.
And the plat says it was dedicated, but it was up to the court to accept it. Is that correct?
Yes.
And these people have paid taxes for 40-plus years, you know?
If we can put the wording in there, "We're not responsible for the drainage," I'd be okay.
Part of the motion that, yes, I can go.
You give that, Steve?
No. Explain the difference between accepted and dedicated to me.
Dedicated is, is, instead of being a private, they dedicate to the public. And by Jim Allison's terms, when they do that, the developer is still responsible for that roadway.
When it's dedicated?
When it's dedicated.
Okay.
For the county to actually maintain that road, we have to do it by a separate instrument by accepting it. So, once we do, the court approves a plat, by no means are we approving the acceptance of the roadways, we're just approving what's on the plat, the dedication and all that. We have to come back.
Well, right now, to accept a road, doesn't it have to be, isn't our policy that it has to be up to county standards?
Our current policy, yes, sir.
In a new development?
Our current policy from...
Only in new developments, not in...
It just said roads that were built prior to 2000.
Okay, so roads built prior to 2000?
Policy was done in 1999.
Okay.
That the homeowners would be responsible for providing adequate right-of-way drainage, subgrade, base material, and priming as defined by Hood County subdivision regulations upon that time that we would accept and do a seal coat, is what the current policy says.
Also, we have 60-foot right-of-way in there now where we used to have, how much right-of-way? That's been changed over the years as well.
Yeah.
On new developments, we want 60-foot right-of-way. That matches the city's right-of-way.
Yes, sir. Back in the, back in the '60s, it was a 50-foot right-of-way.
I mean, my only issue is if we start deviating from policy, which is what everybody seems to do, then why have a policy and just say, "Let's just take in every road that somebody comes in and asks for that's not up to public standards"?
I don't think we're deviating from policy because the policy clearly states that we do have the right to make these passable for the sake of school buses, safety, law and fire, et cetera.
I mean, but that would be for any private road.
The way I read it, back in '69 and '70, a lot of these roads were cliche roads. They were not even paved. Developers would come in and build a development with cliche roads and only base. Then they'd want the county to come in and pave them. All these roads we're talking about have already been ship-sealed, and they already have, if you went out and quartered them, I would guarantee you will have a core value of a lot of roads that have already been accepted throughout the county. But it was to keep people and keep developers in '69 to '75 to '80 from building the development and asking the taxpayers to pay for their payment.
Right.
That was 40 years ago, people. I mean, we have people that live on the lake that are paying lakefront property values when we had a lake, and that tax rate, and they're not, and they're still having to put nickels and dimes together to fix their roadways.
Yes, sir.
May I address you?
Yes, come on in.
One thing that I want you to understand, that these are not private roads, okay? They are public roads.
Yeah.
We don't have ownership of those roads. They were dedicated as public roads. So, don't confuse that with Pecan Plantation or somewhere else because they're public roads. Okay, I just want to clarify.
Jeff, do you see a deal where we need to change the policy if we're gonna start doing this?
I don't think so.
It's open for all the court members.
Now, is that base that's already there, I mean, I know you've got potholes, but is the core up to county standards?
Except for the potholes?
We haven't quartered, Mr. ...
I guess I'm confused. We're asking the passability for fire, EMS, and bus. Everybody pays taxes on school buses, EMS, the law, and the fire trucks. Why wouldn't you want to take care of them without knocking the front end out from under them?
I agree. I've had the same situation, and I can't help but agree with that, and I think that, as this gentleman says, these have always been public roads. And if it's a public road, that means all of the public conveyances are gonna use the road, and that's really what we're protecting here.
After Oak Trails Shores was built, later on, they did do a dedication. At the beginning, they had a guard shack. You had to have a sticker to get in. It wasn't public at that time, but since then, they have done an instrument to dedicate to the public.
Everything we're doing, Don, falls in the guidelines of what we've done in the past, correct?
Pretty much, yes, sir. What, the other policy that we had, had named particular roads, and we come in and made those passable, which it's same verbiage that we weren't responsible for the drainage, and then we've done roads since then under the same pretense, if you will, not on a policy, but...
Yeah, roads in the past when the laws were different.
Yes.
We was allowed to go in there and do that. Since the population of Hood County's gotten bigger, it kind of restricts us from doing that, right?
Yes.
No, it doesn't. I thought when we went over 50,000, we have a right to accept roads.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
That's right.
Without even having any of this in place.
Yeah. Prior to that, it was a district judge...
Yep.
... determination whether it was public or not.
Yeah, but being that we're over 50,000, that's going away.
Also, there's a law on the books that prior to 1981, if a road was open to the general public and was used as a public roadway and county is on it or equipment was on it any time, then you could accept that road and make it passable for EMS, fire, bus traffic, mail.
Have we been maintaining this road?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge.
Why it's on the agenda to accept, to make it passable.
Based on those conditions with, without the responsibility for additional drainage work, I'd make a recommendation we improve it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Rohn, seconded by Commissioner...
I'd like to make one more comment for you, but are we breaking policy doing this?
Our current policy?
Yes.
By what, Regis?
No, we're not. Prior to '81...
In the past, there have been a large number of subdivisions developed in Hood County that had public roads built that do not conform to the current county standards and were never accepted in the county road system. Purpose of this policy is to provide clear, constant, consistent guidelines to communities within the county who wish to improve their neighborhood and have the county accept their roads in the county road system for maintenance.
Did that 50,000 population change the policy?
Didn't change the policy, no.
I mean, it didn't, I know, but it does it...
50,000 was just strictly...
Get in conflict with the policy?
No. The 50,000 was just the added authority of the Commissioners Court to deem a road public. Before that, the Commissioners Court did not have that authority. I count and said, "Y'all, we got smarter after 50,000."
And these were already public.
So, by doing this, what we're saying is any road that was dedicated prior to 1999 that's not a county road, the court has authority? Has the authority to convert it to a county road?
Yes.
Yes.
By the...
By the court.
Yes.
By the action of the court.
And by the makeup of the roadway after the court hears...
That's also why there's a two-mile, in that same policy, that says you're gonna accept two miles per precinct per year.
No more than two miles of road will be accepted each year from any one Commissioner's precinct. Priority will be established by Hood County Commissioners Court in consultation with road operations.
But if it comes before the court, let me get this straight. If it comes before the court, we have the, we have the ability to make it into a county road without breaking policy?
If you get three votes, I mean, you have to have the court's authority.
Have the court's authority, yeah.
But that vote has nothing to do with the policy. We can override a policy.
Yes, and we have, yes.
But the laws changed over, and a census changed as we went over 50,000 as well.
Now, I did go back and look through the minutes back to the early '40s, and I found, you know, in '60 and then in early '80s where the standards had changed, we could go back at this policy and say, "If the standards that the roads were built, would probably make a lot cleaner policy for the court instead of having it say to the county's current standards."
Yeah, that would be, it would also be fair because you're covering a period of time during which people would have had no control.
Yes.
Well, Commissioner Rohn's motion was to approve 715 feet of South Sand, or Shadowwood Street, 3,125 feet on West Shadowwood Street, 700 feet of Greenwood, or Green Brook Street, 830 feet of Brook Valley Street, 980 feet of Oak Meadow Street, and 1,180 feet of Hedge Row Street. And seconded, that motion was seconded by Commissioner Barry.
I've got one more question here. How many roads out there that are like this, Don? Just your estimation?
The other 30%.
We got 30% of the roads are like this. Where does it stop? That's what I'm, that's my main concern. Where does it stop?
We have a little other, under 11 miles of road out there that need to be repaired at a mile and a half a year. We're looking at having these cleaned up in about six years.
You got other developments out there in the same shape all over this county.
That was, that was his question, not just Oak Trails Shores, but the whole county.
Where does this stop?
No.
Oh, Lord.
Well, what percent paved are we under county maintenance now? 90-some percent, right?
Of our county roads are 99.67%.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're talking about...
And we're very fortunate there. In Erath County, not many of them are paved, so we're very fortunate.
We're one of the highest in the state from that standpoint.
Oh, yes, sir.
We just went through this on Port Ridgely, if you remember.
Well, we're gonna go through what I want to mine again, too, in Tikega.
The problem is, you know, the problem is 40 years ago when the late came in, these roads were dedicated and built, a lot of these people's property is turned over and turned over and turned over. You can't even find the developer any longer. But secondarily, I mean, these people are asking for, they're not asking for anything that they're not due, I mean, they're taxpayers. They have a right to ask for it. I don't, I mean...
I mean, I don't have a problem if they bring it up to county standards before we, before we accept it, because then we're not...
But the law doesn't say we have to do that, Jeff.
But our policy does. So, I mean, I mean, are we gonna follow policy or not?
I guess that policy needs to be revised then because the state law's changed over time.
That's what I say. I think the policy needs to be changed before we start doing this.
Why don't y'all get with Bob and write a new policy to cover this then?
This can still be done under the new census, though, we're over 50,000.
Right.
Other question?
The idea about changing policy is another issue.
Right, right. All right, that motion has been made. Once again, I won't restate it, by Commissioner Rohn, seconded by Commissioner Barry. Is there any further discussion?
Judge, I'd like to ask one question. Was the motion to make it passable, make these roads passable?
Yes. To make passable for GISD bus traffic, EMS, and law and fire, for those that I read off.
And mail.
Then we're not, we're not accepting this road, we're just making it passable.
No, sir. We have to accept the road to even get on.
It's accepting. The following dedicated roads.
We're not winding it out or anything else.
No, we're not.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's up to you, Judge.
I voted yes. So, we have three, four, and two nays, is that right?
Yeah.
Because I couldn't hear everybody. Okay, next item is item number two, A, public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on the site development plan for Hood County Animal Shelter at 1-550 Weatherford Highway, Granbury, Texas. Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider and take the appropriate action on the development plan.
Judge, the site plan is for an 8,600-square-foot facility situated on Track Two, being approximately seven acres in the Granbury North subdivision located in Precinct Four. Facility would be served by public water and wastewater. The Development Commission reviewed this plan on November 13th and makes a recommendation to the Commissioners Court to approve the site development plan for the Hood County Animal Shelter at 1550 Weatherford Highway.
Okay, does anyone in attendance wish to make any comments about the development plan for the Hood County Animal Shelter at 1550 Weatherford Highway, Granbury, Texas? Anyone? Okay, a public hearing is now closed.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Is that Commissioner Rohn? Seconded by Commissioner Rohn to accept the development plan for the Hood County Animal Shelter at 1-550 Weatherford Highway. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion carried. Public hearing, set a public hearing for consideration, take appropriate action, the replat of lots 113R, 114R, 115R, Block 1, Stony Creek.
Your Honor, staff recommends setting that public hearing for the January 14th Commissioners Court meeting.
January 14th? Okay, entertain a motion to set this public hearing at January 14th?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rohn to set a public hearing and take appropriate action for the replat of the lots 113R, 114R, 115R, Block 1, Stony Creek for January the 14th. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action for the appointment of Alva Cox as chairman of the Hood County Development Commission.
Judge, as the court's well aware, the Commissioners Court received an email from our chairman on November the 19th announcing his resignation. This is kind of a new one that I've been involved with. Usually, we'll have a Development Commission meeting about that, and he'll show up, but at this particular one, he just resigned, and we haven't had any meetings. We won't have any until January 22nd. So, and speaking with, throughout these past two weeks, speaking with various Commissioners, it was thought that maybe I'd go ahead and place this on the agenda for your consideration to go ahead and have a chairman for the Development Commission when we do meet January 22nd. By looking at the rules, the chairman must be an ex-officio of Hood County, and if I've missed something, I wish the court would let me know, but the only thing that, by looking at Alva Cox, and I have called him, and he would accept the appointment, but I do believe he would be an excellent choice for this commission.
We're gonna entertain a motion to approve Alva Cox as chairman of the Hood County Development Commission.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Judge, on the, the one up under Road Ops, where we had a three-two vote, I never heard you declare that that had passed or failed.
Yeah, it passed. There were three votes for, do you mean to name the people?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just wanted this part of the minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Don. Budget and finance, consider budget line item amendments for the period of November nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, through December second, two thousand thirteen, take appropriate action.
Judge, I have no budget amendments today.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is consider payment of bills from November nineteenth through December second.
Judge, there are two things to consider when it comes to payment of bills. One is the original schedule that I sent you last week that comes to seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. And the other one, I believe you added as an addendum, and that is the payment of the separate attorney fees of sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Did you want to deal with those together, or do you want to handle them separate?
I think we're gonna need some discussion on the, the sixteen thousand dollar one, so let's, let's deal with just those first.
Just, just the, the first section alone. The larger amounts in that, of course, the attorney fees continue to be large for appointment of attorneys to represent indigent defendants. That's twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Then to the City of Granbury for utilities, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and one dollars and sixty-three cents. To Granbury Hood Economic Development Corporation, twenty-five thousand dollars as a quarterly supp, subsidy payment. To Hood County Committee on Aging, a quarterly subsidy payment of eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. To Hood County Appraisal District, the quarterly fees for appraisal and collection services, one hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and forty dollars and twenty-five cents. There are other quarterly subsidy payments. One is to the Children's Advocacy Center for two thousand dollars. The Hood County Child Protective Services, twenty-five hundred dollars. To Pecan Valley MHMR, I believe they've actually changed their, their name recently, ten thousand dollars. And to the Transit System Incorporated, seven thousand five hundred dollars. There's a progress payment due to Modern Contractors, Inc., and this is for construction progress on the Emergency Operations Center, three hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. And then to U.S. National Bank Association, forty-one thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and six cents. These are for fuel card purchases on the Voyager program. I have provided payment warrants for each item on the list in detail. I would recommend all of those payments for your approval to get them.
I have a question. Attorneys, court reporters, and judges, can you break that out from here on out and break that in three subcategories? Because when I went back and pulled records for the last six to nine months, I don't know what we're paying court reporters or judges unless I go back and look at the net data process sheet. But there's been some questions raised, and I'd like to see that line broke out into attorneys, then court reporters, and then judges.
Yes, that'll be no problem. It's, the detail is already in our Fund One Twelve accounting, and it's separately accounted on the grant application every year.
Thank you, sir. Make a motion to approve the bills.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry to approve paying the bills for November nineteenth through December the second, two thousand thirteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Because we have to.
All right. I heard Mr. Tout first, so I have a seconded by Mr. Tout. Any further discussions on paying the bills? Then all in favor?
No.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Consider all matters incidental relate, wait, wait a minute, let's take this next one, this sixteen thousand dollar, for payment of attorney fees that were, was under a court order from a judge in Fort Worth. Judge, let's see, Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker.
Walker, okay.
Yes, sir. After I had submitted-
The bills for your consideration, Judge and Commissioners, an attorney, Kelly Pools, representing Cole Bryan, showed up in my office and gave me a court order to pay an additional sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars in attorney fees representing services provided in two separate cases. I believe that Cole Bryan had asked Judge Walton to consider paying these fees above the normal fees awarded, and Judge Walton declined that order. So, Mr. Bryan appealed that, and that was heard by Judge Jeff Walker, and his appeal was granted. So, the instruction from Judge Walker was for Commissioners' Court to pay these additional fees to Cole Bryan. In one case, six thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, and in another case, ten thousand twenty-one dollars, for a total of sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. I want to go on record by saying these fees were paid originally by Judge Walton according to a schedule that he has set that every attorney knows about before they take cases in his court. But this attorney seemed, deemed that that, that was not an appropriate fee and appealed it to, to this, to the other judge. Is that not true?
That's true, according to my understanding, Judge.
And it's also probably interesting to point out that according to the, the copy I'm looking at of this order, it was signed on the fourth day of December in two thousand thirteen, which is one year ago. Judge Jeff Walker retired two and a half years ago. So, I want to know, did somebody just use his stamp? Or is he called back to hear this case? Or what was the deal? Because I happen to know personally, because I live near him and play golf with him, they retired two and a half years ago. So, I want to know if he really signed this, or if that's a stamp, or what it is. I mean, it's overriding some, a decision that Judge Walton made locally against policies that were already written, and that was completely and summarily ignored by the administrative judge's level when he re-awarded this attorney higher fees.
I guess I'm confused, and maybe you can't answer these, maybe Judge Cochrane can, maybe Jeff can, because he's an attorney, so. So, this is a court-appointed attorney. We seem to be spending a lot of time on this, there were Commissioners' Court, his court-appointed attorneys, but Jeff, how do you get on that list?
You, you just submit your name to be on the list.
So, anybody in the metroplex could, could be a court-appointed attorney?
Yes.
So, this gentleman from Tarrant County or wherever is asked to be on the list?
Yeah, he has an office here in Granbury.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
All right, so he gets appointed, and we, do you know what the fee schedule is from the get-go?
No.
You don't know that?
I don't know criminal fees.
No, but I mean, do the, do the lawyers know that?
Yeah, but you know, it's, there's always some extenuating, can be some extenuating circumstances. I mean, it's just like cost overruns on, on our building.
No, it's not, Jeff.
I, I haven't looked at what all he's done, so I, I'm not gonna say I justify his, his billing procedures, or his billing, but I do know a judge has ordered us to pay. I mean, that's, that, that's, that's our issue. I mean, unless we want to appeal that, which is gonna cost more than, more than the sixteen thousand dollars, I mean, we can do that, but it, it, that wasn't his suggestion that we pay. That was his order that we do pay this fee.
We'll be held in contempt of court if we don't approve it.
I'll be glad to verify that it was indeed the judge's signature. It, I do have the original stamp as filed of record with our district clerk. So, it, it would be highly unusual that that would-
I know it would. It's just a question. The dates don't line up.
I mean, he, he could have been a visiting judge.
That's what I want to know, was he or not? Because I happen to know that he was retired, formally retired as of that date, well before that date.
I believe that Judge Walker is the-
The administrative judge for this region. I, I know that every year he does sign the administrative fee voucher that we have to pay. It's somewhere around two thousand five hundred to two thousand eight hundred dollars a year that the three hundred and fifty-fifth Judicial District has to pay for the operation of the administrative region.
Thing about it, I've talked to several judges, and this is totally unprecedented.
Yes, it is.
And it just opens up-
The fee schedule that Judge Walton has and Judge Messina have has just gone out the window.
Then why would we pay it, then?
Because we've, we can't, we don't have a choice.
Well, but I, I guess Judge Walton, I guess, the way I understand this, because we've been dealing with it on these indigent defense, Walton and Messina has to sign a voucher or PO that this is what we owe these people. Is that not correct?
That, that's how it should be.
He did it originally.
Okay, but then somebody didn't like it, so they appealed it to the next level.
Right.
So, the only one you're in contempt with is the next level. So, as Jeff said, it will cost the taxpayers more money if we appeal it, but at the same time, you know, that's the problem. We don't see any of these fee schedules. We don't see the hours billed. Haynes and Boone, when we get a bill from the lawyers on water, we see a breakout of the hours that were billed and how much it was billed for.
But that's all in here.
That, we received that this morning.
Yeah, but the point is, the point is, guys, it was filed by an attorney. It was a, it was looked at by an attorney who's also a district judge and made a ruling on it. And then it was appealed by another attorney and heard before another judge attorney, and, and now we're in a position where we have no choice.
That's true.
We have no choice. We have to pay this or appeal it. To appeal it will cost us twenty-five thousand dollars. The bill's for sixteen. I mean, it's, it's another attorney-to-attorney privilege that is in the system that simply holds us helpless. There's nothing we can do.
So, we just got this back up. Stan just handed it to us this morning on all the hour breakouts.
Right. Yeah, I've, I've had that and looked at it, and it's, I mean, how can you question it? I could make one of these out, too, Steve, if I wanted to.
I guess my question is, what's the difference, though, when we go out for a bid for automotive work, and they tell us one thing, and then they go back and charge us more money? And that seems to be what Judge Walton is contending this gentleman did.
Yeah, he did. Judge Walton tried to hold him to the fee schedule.
The only, only recourse is, is that not to appoint him as an attorney in future.
Who cares? He's gonna get his sixteen grand anyway.
But he'll not get any future-
He doesn't need them. He's in Tarrant County.
Well, now, he's, like I said, he has an office here.
He's in Tarrant County. It was a capital case.
Anyway.
Just, it's just very disturbing because, you look at that, and then you look at another twenty-one thousand for attorneys this month, again. You know, the counties were, were, were being gradually melted by them. And it's a great job. Can I use some of my training money to go back to law school?
Jeff, where are we at on the, on the workshop me and you discussed?
You know, we're still, I'm still gathering information with the jail. I've talked to Rhonda. I'm trying to figure out how many, I've talked to Penny, to determine how many cases we have that are indigent defense cases. And when we get that information, we need to pursue something, but we, we need to find out what that information says.
What this conversation is about is for a public defender's office.
But it's not, yeah, it's not ripe to, to pursue something until we get data.
I don't disagree.
And Rhonda, you know, Rhonda said about three months of data will, will be available around Christmas.
Basically, I, I'm trying to clarify some things. The judge here that's presiding is the Eighth Administrative Judicial Law. Is he a visiting, I mean, is he just, does he hear certain cases? Is that why, I mean, Dick had raised a question I can't answer, but he's retired, but does he only hear these type cases?
I don't know what else.
Wonder if he's a law question?
Maybe he is, I don't know.
I believe he does serve- He's a visiting judge here in the three hundred and fifty-fifth Judicial District Court, and I, I think if you look at the paper that was actually certified by the district clerk, it's on letterhead of the three hundred and fifty-fifth Judicial District Court.
What's the chances of Judge Walton explaining this to us?
Well, I don't think- It's gonna change anything, Steve. I'm sure he could explain it, but he's had one of his decisions overruled here, so.
But I don't understand, if they know what the fee structure is going in, how do they change it?
I don't know. Boy, you change it by appealing it to a, a different judge.
Well, you know, not every case is the same. I mean, some, some are, you may have one witness, you know, two doors down from, from your office, and some may be, maybe you have to go to Fort Worth, maybe you have to go to Huntsville, or, you know, and there's, there's time, and that's all an attorney sells is, is time. And, and so, you know, there may be fifteen witnesses. I mean, you don't, you don't ever know what you're going to get until you delve into the case. So, you, I mean, there is a base pay, but, I mean, there, with, with extenuating circumstances, I mean, there's gonna be times when people receive more money because they've done more work.
Well, and are there ever any two cases the same? No, so therefore, there's always extenuating circumstances, a hundred percent of the time. And we are on the end of that. It says when it's all said and done and figured up and multiplied times the number of hours, we have to pay it. So, I, I don't think there's anything else for us to discuss on this. We are, we are handcuffed. So, I'll make the motion we pay this bill and get it off our back before it becomes more expensive.
My second. A motion made by Commissioner Rohn, seconded by Commissioner Tout to approve the sixteen thousand dollar payment to Cole Bryan. Any further discussion?
Well, I'd like for, I mean, this, this will be part of our discussion when we get to the indigent part. I mean, at the workshop.
Yeah.
I mean, how, how this could have changed, or how this could have happened, or how, I mean, because we don't deal with this. This, this bench up here doesn't deal with that kind of stuff every day. So, we need to know, because as Dick says, these bills, you know, our attorney bills just keep climbing and climbing, as we know, like our health bills do for indigent health.
All right. Any further discussion on this? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider all matters incidental relating to the issuance of sale of Hood County Limited Bond Series two thousand thirteen, including the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of such bond and obligating the levy of ad valorem taxes to pay the bond, approving pay-in agent registrar agreement and engagement letter for the bond council.
Judge and Commissioners, as you instructed, First Southwest, through the offices of Jim Sabonis and Andre Ayala, did proceed with a bid, and they had some very good results. This is phase one of the debt that is proposed for the financing of constructing the recreation facility. And phase one is six point five million dollars. Phase two will be three point five million dollars that will happen early in two thousand fourteen. But phase one, for the six point five million dollars, on their bid, they came back and they had eight bids that were at a stated interest rate of three percent or less. And there were seven of those bids that had a stated interest rate of two point seven five percent or less, which I think is very strong. And it's, I, I think the court should be congratulated for maintaining the county's financing and finances in such an exemplary fashion to attract these kind of bids. These bids came from various banks, some of them local. Everyone was invited to participate. The winning bid is from, they say, BB and T. I wish that Jim Sabonis could have been here this morning to describe this process to you more fully, but he couldn't make it. The interest rate that is stated on this is two point two eight percent, and it's for a ten-year period. Just as a curiosity, if, if you take the, the bond issue of six point five million dollars over ten years at three percent, and you compare that to the total interest cost at two point two eight percent, the savings- the savings over the issue is about two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars of interest. So it is substantial. As you recall, the county borrowed just over two point eight million dollars in the summer, and we had an interest rate of one point six one percent. I should say that interest rates have gone up marginally in the marketplace. This offering is also just over twice the dollar amount. And the maturity schedule is ten years instead of seven. And that makes up the difference between the one point six one percent and the two point two eight. Two eight percent. But what Jim and Andre had projected was, what they expected the interest rate to be was about two point seven five percent. So this is significantly less than the two point seven five percent that they had built into their schedule. But this would be the first part. And Dan Culver of the firm of McCollum Parkhurst is here this morning. He has brought the papers that you would need to execute and allow the judge to sign, should you decide to proceed with this. I think there are some other matters to attend to, but that's, that's the financing side, and I'd really like to ask Dan Culver if he would come and make his presentation, and he could also answer any questions about the issuance process for you. Dan?
Good morning, members of the court and judge. Yeah, Jim called me just as I pulled into the parking lot out here, he's got stuck in traffic this morning, he was on the way, but he said he was behind a wreck for about an hour and a half, so he couldn't make it. So it's pretty gnarly out there coming in from Fort Worth. I think Stan did a good job of describing, you know, the bid process, y'all did get eight bids. The bids came in on Friday, BB and T out of Charlotte was the low bid. I have prepared the documents on the assumption that you'll sell the bonds to BB and T, the low bidder. The item you have before you is item three, item three A is actually the motion language, if you decide to move forward to call the motion. So the, you know, Stan hit the high spot, about the only thing he didn't mention that I would point out is that these bonds are callable in two thousand and fifteen. So it gives you the ability to refinance fairly quickly, and I think that was the plan all along, at least that was the first Southwest plan. And they have a long-term financing plan that may involve rolling this into a future issuance to kind of make it a permanent financing, but it's, you did get eight bids, I thought they were very competitive bids. So going back to, I guess, the first legal step in this process that involved the holding of a bond election in November two thousand and twelve for ten million dollars for this recreational facility, it's a fairly unique statute, fairly unique project in a lot of ways, as you guys all know. But it does oblige the county to levy a tax each year sufficient to cover the debt service. And so that is part of the obligation. The way the deal is structured from a legal perspective is that the project to be built, which is this recreational facility, needs to be leased to a public or private entity, and y'all have been in negotiations with the YMCA of Metropolitan Fort Worth for some time now. And I think you may have on your item, on your agenda today to consider their lease agreement. That is part of the legal structure. We did, you know, the idea on this, Stan said, is to basically borrow this money, what we call bank qualified, and that gives you that lowest possible rate. In order to do that, we have to close by the end of December. Right now, we're scheduled to close around December thirty-first. I got an email this morning from the purchaser, they're asking to close on December thirtieth, and we might be able to handle that. So the, now, I have prefiled with Attorney General's Office, because all the state agencies pretty much shut down from December twenty-third on. And in order to get these bonds approved, we will be submitting, if you approve this issuance, I'll be submitting overnight to them the final signed documents tonight, asking them to release by the twenty-third, and so we can then set up our closing the following week. But part of what I have to submit to them is also, you know, evidence that you're going to tend to lease to the YMCA. I think we have a little bit of flexibility and latitude in that, but I'll just point out they kind of go hand in glove. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the legal process or this order, or anything else I can speak to.
Anyone have any questions for Dan? Then what the motion will be, will be to allow the county judge to sign an order authorizing the issuance and sale of the Hood County Limited Tax Bond Series two thousand and thirteen and enacting other provisions related thereto for six point five million dollars.
That's right.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rohn, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut, any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. All right. We are now down to, I think, is that it for you, Stanley? All right, very good. Item number one on C.
We've already done that.
Yeah, we've already done. Item number two, I have been asked to table that, I'll entertain a motion to table that. Motion made by Commissioner Taut, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rohn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Item number three on miscellaneous, to discuss and take appropriate action on the lease and operating agreement between Hood County and the Young Men's Christian Association of Metropolitan Fort Worth. Does any, any? Anybody have any questions about the lease agreement? I know we've all been over it many times.
The final agreement concludes that one dollar per year.
Right, right.
Okay, that's the final, okay.
All right.
I make a motion we approve the lease agreement between Hood and the YMCA.
Okay, is, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rohn, do any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding payment of attorney fees. We've already done that. Okay, is anything else in front of the court? It is now ten, or is it nine fifty-six, and we're adjourned.